You do your two.
Steve's not here, so we have to worry about that.
Yeah, the chairman's not here. So Chairman Miller will not be here today, and I will be presiding over the meeting. Today, we'll have the invocation offered by Pastor Michael Fanning of the Trinity Southern Baptist Church of Casa Grande. That would be you. And those who wish to participate, please stand.
Almighty God, we come before you this morning with painful hearts, Lord. We thank you for this beautiful sky that we had. We thank you for this rain. We thank you, Lord, for your love that is totally unconditional. And Father, I just pray for these men and these women and all those who serve on the Board of Supervisors of Penal County, Lord, that you would give them wisdom and direction. And, Lord, that you would guide them in the choices and decisions that they make to make our lives greater in Penal County. Father, we are a county that we love to be like a family. Lord, that we need to join together, encourage one another, uplift one another in all things that we say and do. And Father, I just ask you to keep each and every one healthy, strong, and protect their families and keep them safe. And with all these things, we give you the honor and the glory and the praise. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Supervisor Vidello, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where wits have stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, well, welcome to the Penal County Board of Supervisors' regular meeting, June 4th, 2025. It is 9:32. First off is County Manager's Report. Mr. Lou.
Good morning, Mr. Vice Chairman. A couple of good announcements to make regarding the further progression and development of our airpark south here, the southern portion of our county. First, there was a press release given by DigiFlight. They've come here and spoken with you and their executive team in the past. Very thankful to you and the state legislators for passing laws that enabled them to win a P-3 contract with the Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs, aka DMA, State DMA. They're partnering with them to serve for the development of rotary wing aviation program here in the state. It focuses a lot on training some of our foreign military partners. There are a lot of experts and global manufacturers that they partner with to do this. But this is just up on the north side of our airpark, adjacent to where DMA had purchased some additional state land to do this. So this will help with the development and the activity there at our airpark. In addition to that, the Federal Aviation Administration completed the benefit-cost ratio analysis for a potential tower. So we are a candidate, and we qualify for the Contract Tower Program. It's one step in a long process. We've got many more steps to take, but it's a good and a big one in the right direction for us. And then we did talk about the success of our career fairs that we put on and that our workforce program puts on here in the county. And we had a video that highlighted, told the story of some of the visitors there at that fair.
Today, we're here at our Arizona Network Penal County Career Fair. We are here at Central Arizona College, Signal Peak Campus. Our job here at Arizona Network Penal County is to connect local employers with our local workforce. We have a large percentage of our local workforce that commutes outside of Penal County every single day for work. Our job here is to promote the opportunities we have within. We have the same type of opportunities as they do in other counties and other areas.
I'm actually completely impressed with the turnout. I think that there's a lot of people that came in very, very energetic and very motivated to find a job.
I'm here because I'm looking for a position. Currently unemployed since December. The company I was with did a reorg, and my position was eliminated. And been hitting the street hard, trying to find new opportunities, even exploring new industries.
We have over 26 employers here that are hiring everything from senior-level positions all the way to entry-level positions. Employers are able to present themselves, market what they have going on, all of their different opportunities. And it's a great opportunity for both employer and job seeker to learn what is local here in Penal County.
It's convenient to be able to come and have an opportunity to visit with a few people at one time, back-to-back, and to explore new opportunities. It makes it convenient, for sure.
My focus is education, because that's what I'm getting my degree for. So that's my focus, is education, anything related to that.
From the conversations I've had with some of the companies that are here, there does seem to be a variety of opportunities at various levels, whether it be entry level or senior leadership.
Through Arizona Network Penal County, we have a job center where job seekers can come in, receive different resources, sign up for these different events, training opportunities. We refer those job seekers to events like this that we put on so that they can connect in person. It's easier to connect with a face than it is a resume. So we like to present these type of opportunities so those people can connect face-to-face with employers.
Thank you, Mr. Lou. Anything else?
Nope, thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Okay, next, item two, Supervisor District Updates. I'll start with Supervisor Sertie.
Yeah, I don't really have an update for my district, but something that involves us all. There's a lot of misinformation going around, and I'm not really aware of how it's going to work either. But Chairman Miller spoke last meeting about the bill that passed with the water recharging. And there's a lot of rampant speculation. They're going to be pumping sewer water down into the aquifer, et cetera. So I believe that next week Supervisor Miller is going to bring in some experts to address this, because I really don't know how it's going to work either. So I think it could be educational for everybody, and we can stop jumping to conclusions and speculating. Is this a good thing or not? I believe it probably is a good thing, and let's see how safely it's being done. But that's going to be next week, so let's be ready to get, be educated on that.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Vidello, I can say your name. Supervisor Goodman.
Wait, he didn't have anything? We had a town hall meeting in regards to the incorporation effort and was just presenting from the county's perspective. This is the process. These are the steps. If it does pass, this is what will happen from that point forward and how the county's involvement would be from elections and so on and so forth. And so, but I have a video that I'd like to share of that town hall meeting.
This was a town hall meeting that provided an opportunity for our residents to hear what the pros and cons of incorporation is. The people on our panel were experts from the League of Cities. There's 91 cities in the state of Arizona, and they all are part of that association.
It's good to be with all of you, my district.
Steve Chukri was the county supervisor in Maricopa County for several years. But he's also been the president of the Restaurant Association of Arizona for many, many years. So what he brought to the table tonight was speaking from the perspective of business.
This will be an August 5 election.
And another was our county recorder that was able to talk to how the election process is moving forward.
This is not presented by incorporating for a corporation or against the corporation.
Having Mark here as the moderator and being able to intervene from the public safety perspective was very helpful.
We are going to grow whether we incorporate or not. Like, that's been proven through the job years that I've been here.
So a lot of great questions as far as taxes and how does it work? How does it affect? How does a new town council get appointed and so on and so forth? And that's what was the discussion all about.
One of the things that I think there's misunderstanding about is that possible incorporations should know exactly what their budgets are going to be before they make the decision to incorporate. That's a question only they can answer when they have all of the dollars in front of them and all the things that the citizens want them to do. The two things that they have to do, road maintenance and police services.
This is my opinion, but I don't see the benefits of going incorporated. We're adding responsibilities and taxes.
Taxes would automatically be increased. It's the big misconception that is out there right now.
I think the biggest misunderstanding is that their taxes will automatically go up. That's just not true. For property tax and sales tax, it has to be an election of the citizens in that incorporated city or town to impose a sales tax burden on those, a property to these. The pros that we hear from incorporating, receiving that shared revenue that you didn't get, that was basically that shared revenue was going to other cities. And so now they get that, and they could use that to pay for the two things that people really care about, you know, good roads and police. Also, this county, Penal County, covers, as was said many times tonight, an area the size of Connecticut. Being an incorporated city, they've become the 11th largest city. They've become the largest city in Penal County. You have more ability to focus on your issues. You have a greater sense of being listened to because you're a government now, and you have duly elected officials.
This area has attempted to try to be put on a ballot so that the citizens could be able to vote whether or not they wanted to be a city or a town. That's never been able to be on a ballot. So August 5th, there will be an election. And now people will be able to go and make their vote and make themselves known as to whether or not they want to be incorporated or not.
If, if you like the way things are, if you like the level of service that you receive from the county now, it's really a personal decision.
Well, thank you so much for your time. Thanks for coming out. Appreciate it tonight.
We should not demonize our neighbors because they feel one way or the other. We should try to understand and, you know, and then accept whatever the outcome of the election is.
Their destiny is going to be controlled by them or by somebody else. They need to decide, who's going to control your destiny? Is it going to be you, or is it going to be somebody else?
Thank you, Supervisor Goodman. I'll see, from my district, many of you are aware, of course, we had fires in Oracle last week. Unfortunately, no one was hurt in those, but we did lose five homes up there. About 1,233 acres were burnt. We've been working with Public Works. This flyer is going out here in a minute. We're going to throw some, throw, we're going to place some dumpsters out on Cody Loop and out by the Camp Oviedo community for anyone that has brush they want to dump, any food they want to get rid of that was ruined by not having electricity, which now has been replaced or been brought back in most areas. So we're going to start with dumpsters this week. We'll put them out over the weekend, and people can bring things. They can't bring asbestos batteries, oil, paint, antifreeze, motor oil, all that. It'll be in the flyer, but the main point is that people going through the destroyed homes, if they, they're getting help out there now, but they need a place to dump it. So we'll have dumpsters in place, and they'll be replaced over the weekend. And into the early part of next week, we have some further things going on out there for getting rid of brush, but that'll be next week's update. So that's all I have going on at the moment. So, next item is a discussion and update regarding the 2025 state and federal legislative session. And since Mr. Miller is not here, I bet there's not going to be a whole lot going on. But Ms. Lewis, I saw you wandering about. You, you have something? You can always find something to talk about, I know, so.
Chairman, Vice Chair, members of the board, legislative update right now. We are in the 143rd day of the session. 214 bills have been signed into law and 138 have been vetoed. They were on hiatus for about two weeks. They are back, at least the House is back in session today. Two major topics that will be going on will be in regards to the Isaac School Bill and their funding, and then also raising the smoking age from 18 to 21 in the state. And then we do believe that they're going to take another couple of weeks off and then come back for the Joint Legislative Budget Committee. So, any questions? There's not a whole lot going on that I can unfortunately report about.
I have a question about the previous segment.
Go ahead.
Difference between a city and a town. How come Gilbert can be at 300,000 people and they're a town, and yet smaller communities are cities? What is the, is there a difference?
Chairman, Vice Chair, members of the board, Supervisor Sertie, I don't have that answer for you. That doesn't fall under the elections umbrella. I know we've had some kind of conversations about that, but it's a nuance that depending on how you interpret the statute, I think that would be something to possibly ask legal or community development.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Supervisor Sertie, I can tell you, a town, when they vote for a councilman, it's everybody, right? They don't run in districts. Cities have the option of being either at-large or in districts.
Have the option.
They have the option. There's some other nuances as well, but that's kind of one of the big differences.
Okay.
So, there you go. Any, anything, any other questions from anyone? Thank you very much. You're, you're out. Right, next, item four, Purchasing Division Report. Ms. Woods. Good morning.
Good morning, Vice Chair McClure and members of the board. Angie Woods, I'm the Director of the Office of Budget and Finance. And it's my pleasure to present today's Purchasing Division Report for June 4th, 2025. The report, we are requesting to approve two contract amendments to, to, two contract award recommendations for RFP 220226 for Specialty Legal Services and ROQ 253428 for Construction Management at Risk for the Penal County Administration Building. And then we are requesting, are recommending two contract amendments extending contract periods for ROQ 225027 for Housing Rehabilitation and Demolition Pre-Quarified Contractors List, and then RFP 241029 for Printing, Mailing, and Email Notification of Property Tax Documentations. Included in the report are two purchase order changes that are required of your approval. And then lastly, we're seeking approval of two cooperative purchase requisitions over the amount of $250,000. Are there any questions?
Board, have any questions? No? Make it a motion, please. Thank you, Ms. Woods.
Thank you.
A motion?
Chairman, Vice Chair, I motion to approve the purchasing as written.
Have a motions or a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Woods. Appreciate it. Item five, Consent Items. All items indicated by an asterisk, asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda. Unless a board member, county manager, or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. We have items A through I. Anyone on the board care to pull an item? No? County manager? Public? Nobody? Wow, this is an easy day. This is pretty impressive. Okay, so make it a motion, please, on the consent items.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve items A through, give me a second. AI.
Ooh.
As presented.
Don't, don't you dare.
I won't.
No, okay. Okay. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. We are up to six. Call of the public. Call of the public. It's the time of the period, or is the time period for members of the public to address the Board of Supervisors to provide public input relating to subject matter within the Board of Supervisors authority and jurisdiction. Those wishing to address the board need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling it for further consideration and decision at a later date. Do we have any cards? Good gosh, he threw me. Okay, well, then, Ms., come on up. Ms. Miller, how you doing today?
Pretty good.
In all of this, please state your name and general area where you, where you reside.
Heidi Miller. I now reside in Coolidge, 808. I'm in Rich's district now. And my concern is, we, I attend a church in Santan Valley, one of the churches I go to. And we have an employee there that is losing her job because Job Corps is being terminated very abruptly. And we have kids that are from Penal County that have gone to Job Corps. And these kids are losing their place to live. And they are losing, they're not able to complete an educational program that they're in the middle of because they're just terminating this program. And, you know, my father always said to us, "Do your homework, and you'll make good decisions." And I think I see you guys making pretty good, doing homework before you make decisions here. And yet, I'm looking at this, and I'm going, these kids that are in this program and these youth are frequently from foster care families. They're frequently from broken home families. And doing this to them will increase the number of ACEs, Adverse Childhood Experiences, and increase their trauma. And the result from that can be, you know, they'll be more likely to be in jail or prison. They'll be more likely to spend time in substance abuse treatment centers or psychiatric hospitals, which cost like $1,400 a day. And not only that, it's like if we just fire employees, they're going to have to go on unemployment. And we're going to be paying them to do, look for work instead of doing like a transition period where we could have helped them find other employment if we are actually just terminating this program. And there's no replacement for the program either. And I think it's, it's, at least the concept of the program is important to help children and disadvantaged youth. So I think we need to see if we can't get it paused. And I think we need to see if it can't be paused and some kind of transition program put in. We need to look at how we can help these youth and find them a place to stay and mitigate the damages that are being done. There's, you know, I worked in the field. I worked at the state hospital. I know what these kids' lives look like. I did in-home counseling for juvenile justice. And I had a kid that had gang members for aunts and uncles and alcoholic for grandparents. And sometimes this is kind of a program is the only way they're going to change their life. And so I would just like to, and I am going up the line as far as our elected leaders. I think the message needs to be sent. If we can, we should pause this. And if not, we need to mitigate it as much as possible. And I'm meeting with Neil.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Miller. Any others wish to say anything? There we go.
I'm Barry McCain from, from the city of Maricopa. I'd like to say personally to Supervisor Goodman, thank you for having, let's go through the Santan again. Since Combs is where I grew up, farm I grew up on, is right where Combs is. But if there's anything I can do to help you, I would be glad to do that. If you need me, I'm there, and I just want you to know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCain. Any others wish to come to the call? Mr. Ravalis, are you today?
Roberto Ravalis, resident of Gold Canyon. Mr. Vice Chairman, at the last meeting, some of my remarks were characterized as not factual and grandstanding. The facts are that at the October 2, 2024 board meeting, Mr. Goodman said, quote, "I am a Republican and a member of the LDS Church," unquote. And again quoting, he said, "I'm a supporter of Donald Trump and J.D. Vance. I bet a majority of my church, my faith, supports the Republican platform," unquote. Mr. Goodman's words, not mine. The issue is the Republican platform that's hurting not only Penal County, but the entire nation. My words are not grandstanding, not an attack on Mr. Goodman on his faith, but an attack on the Republican platform that Mr. Goodman supports. Do not deflect from this issue. That is clearly an uncomfortable one to defend in open session. But even, even Elon Musk considers what's going on right now an abomination with a platform. It's clearly affecting the level of service by the county, both for incorporated and unincorporated areas. Nonetheless, it's undisputedly a platform that's attacking education, economy, healthcare, housing, public safety, against wildfires, roads, and most importantly, it's an extremist platform that's attacking the Constitution's separation of powers, attacking our governing institutions, and asserting dictatorial authority that's placing all of us in jeopardy of being swept up from our American streets and hauled off to heaven knows where. Nonetheless, this Republican, Republican platform demands an open, not private discussion. My intention is to help our county overcome this disastrous platform. I again recommend that this board contact and work with our congressional delegation. Most importantly, contact Senators Kelly and Gallego to prevent the economic hurt facing our county residents. Place this topic on the board's agenda, and let's hear what our county's secular and non-secular residents recommend to correct the chaotic and unwise proposals within this disastrous platform. Mr. Goodman, the guy in the Trump 2028 red cap at the last board meeting was not simply, as you put it, "one of our political individuals," unquote, but the partisan and the bombastic county assessor demonstrating disregard for our Constitution's two-term presidential requirement. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ravalis. Any others? Ms. Podasky. Close enough? I mean, pretty dang close, right?
It is pretty close. What's my first name?
Deb. No, sorry, I, I'm sorry.
It's a task, guys.
I, I know, it's a task. I'm sorry, hey.
What's my first name? Hi, I'm Dia.
I had the D right. I had the D right.
You did. And I live in unincorporated Penal County, home of the Akiin, Toraata, and Hila River people. I live near the Superstition Mountains, which are sacred to the Apache people and the Puma people. Last meeting, Mr. Goodman and Ms. McCain talked about getting together and finding common ground. It was a Rodney King thing. Like, can't we all just get along? And I've spent 60 years on that belief system. I have been an advocate on causes and not parties and not people. And it is possible to find common ground. I probably disagree with most of you on a whole lot of issues. Yet, I applaud Mr. Sertie for his love of the desert. I love the desert. I applaud him for not wanting it to burn up, not wanting it to be invaded by exotics, plants. Mr. Goodman, when I had trouble finding things to write about Penal County from a Facebook page I administer, I always knew what's going on in Mr. Goodman's district. He was communicating. I applaud that. Mr. Miller, if he were here, I'd just say, "Water." And Mr. McClure, your passion for the people in your district was so evident when you talked about the fires last time. It made, it moved me that you cared that much about the people. And Mr. Vidello, you make me smile because you have the enthusiasm I used to have at the beginning of your school year. This is going to be the best year ever. Going to work hard. Going to make it happen. We're going to succeed. John Steinbeck wrote a book, Travels with Charlie, and he said, "The difference between morning and evening eyes was apparent in most things. Keep your morning eyes." All that being said, we're never going to get past where we are until we start talking about what does divide us. And that is values. We stopped valuing the same thing, and vision. And I don't know how we're going to do that. I don't know how we're going to have honest conversations without accusation about something as difficult. as a value and vision. But we have to find a way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any others who wish to speak to the board? Sir, come forward. Just state your name and generally where you live.
Good morning. Name is Bishop Gary R. Johnson, Jr. Live in the Santan Valley area.
You, you can raise the mic up.
Thank you very much. Bishop Gary R. Johnson, Jr. Live in the Santan Valley area. Just had a couple of questions over the last week. Something that, well, first of all, how are everybody doing? Y'all doing good? Amen. I had a couple of questions. Something came up this week. I just had a couple of questions dealing with the Job Corp situation across the, I guess, country, nation that's been affecting Arizona, other states like Texas. Personal, been getting a lot of phone calls in. And a couple of questions I was having as far as what the upper powers that be, would there be a plan put together? Because a lot of, a lot of employees are being laid off as of this week. Think today would be like 200 kids, 216 kids being laid off the program. Some was in the middle of their program as far as their trades and things of that nature that haven't been able to complete it and are losing housing. Now, I know some private entities have stepped up to try to help this situation out as much as possible. And then, but the employees that's being laid off at the end of the month, they, they're saying that they're not getting severance pay for six months or anything of that nature. And so just wanted to see, would there be a plan in place to help save some of these employees? Financial structure, and then the kids' housing and schooling as well? So I think that was just a couple of questions I had as well to bring to the board.
Okay, thank you. We can't respond. That's not what we do. It's not, it's not a question and answer.
Okay. But so those are some of the items I want to, and then if there be a replacement plan for that that's taking place. But thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any others who wish to speak? Seeing and hearing none. I'll close the call of the public. Mr. Goodman, you, Goodman, I get your, whoever. Mr. Goodman, you were called out. Do you have any, would you like to respond?
Maybe, first of all, I'll start off with kind of give direction to our staff in regards to the, the Job Corps. I'd like to probably have a better understanding of what, what all took place and how that involves, and do we have anything, any kind of other plan or whatever? Anyway, if you could kind of give us feedback on that, maybe notify each of us. I, I'm grateful to Mr. Ravelis for actually going back and looking at that particular segment. And nowhere in there do I actually state that the LDS Church endorses Donald Trump. And those, I believe those were his words. But I did say that we, so much of the platform of the Republican Party, many members of my church here locally support that side. So probably a misstatement as far as churchwide, there's over 18 million members, so, and that's over the entire world. But nonetheless, I appreciate him stepping forward and actually clarifying that particular statement that I made. Thank you.